Ladies and gentlemen, the Tuesday, October 6 briefing will now start. The time is 2:03. Starting out with our executive services, Dr. Atkins with our policy review. And Patty Elkins is here, and Mr. Martin will weigh in. I'll give it to you, Ms. Elkin.
Good afternoon. The first six policies on your list were all pre-briefed on September 8th. They are scheduled to be heard at a public hearing on October 20th. We have made no changes since the pre-briefing on September 8th. So this is that last final chance for you to take a look at them and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Elkin. Board members, any questions?
They did a good job with the briefing.
I think we're good for the first six.
Wonderful, okay. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jeff McCullers, who's going to talk about a proposed new policy, should you desire.
Dr. McCullers.
Good afternoon. There? Oh, okay. Good afternoon, board members. Thank you for the time. What we have here for you to think about is a set of companion policies. I'm going to go first because I'm more courageous. Mark's going to go second because he's got more material and he's planned it better. But we have two policies. One is a policy that would codify how we name schools, and then another policy that would codify a totally new concept about naming school facilities. And I'll do 9.10 first to give you an idea of what we're thinking. This policy has five sections. It sets a purpose, why we want to name schools. It sets an authority, which clarifies that the school board is always in charge of what we name our schools, and they can change them at any time. And it establishes the causes for which we might consider changing a school name or establishing a new school. And it lists some of those possible and likely circumstances, leaving open the possibility there might be some other reason that we want to change a school name. It provides a process, and it actually breaks the process down three ways for three broad categories of schools we have. There's a section for schools that are operated directly by the school district. There's a section for how we apply the policy for charter school names. And there's a section for other schools that may be operated by third parties under contract or some other arrangement. And then finally, the longest section is a set of actual criteria, how we decide whether a school name is the best name for the given circumstance or not. And it goes through 11 different criteria. Some are broken down in some considerable detail, and some are kind of broad. These are based on a lot of things. The bulk of it is an attempt to capture what we've always done, the kind of factors we've always considered in the past. A couple of things have been taken, inspired by other district policies that I found on the web. And then some others are just some technical issues that we'd like to clear up, names that cause trouble inadvertently down the road. We're trying to prevent that from happening. So I can go into any of these in detail. This is the pre-briefing. I just wanted to know generally what you think and what you'd like to know more about when we bring it forward.
Ms. Dujer.
Well, I'm glad that we are going to have something to where everybody can see, and there are no questions about how we're going to proceed with new schools, because we are continuing to be a growing area, and we are going to be building new schools. And, you know, I know in the past, there has been some question as to, you know, we send something out and say, you know, "Send us a name that you would like to see on the school," or whatever, from community members and so forth. But this actually puts it down in black and white, and that was what I liked about this when I actually read this.
That was exactly the idea.
And somewhere in here, and I don't remember where it was that I read it, but you said something about individuals to the community. Can you point me to that line?
Naming schools after individuals is what you're asking about?
Yeah.
5G.
5G.
Yes, 5G.
All right. And there is a reason that I'm saying this, 5G.
Yep, and you're looking at 5GA, where it's so posthumous, make sure that they're not living.
Well, that's not what I was talking about. Somewhere it talks about, it'll be from like the area, the local area, somebody, you know, that has something to do with history or has made a significance.
Oh, yes, I know what you're thinking about.
Am I on the wrong policy? Is that on the other policy?
No, that's up on 5A, the relevance.
Well, thank you for finding those so quickly. I'm so glad I don't have to do that. But the relevance part, I thought, was very, very significant and very important.
Yes.
When I read that, and I don't want to use any names or anything, but we have a school that has been named something, and I'm glad that we named it that, but, and I'm going to get, everybody's getting ready to know which school I'm talking about, I really did not understand the significance of naming that particular school, because there are a lot of Purple Heart veterans out there, and at the time, I was, I really didn't understand that. And we didn't have a clear-cut delineation of how we were going to proceed with naming schools. And I know there was also a name thrown out on the table of another individual that we should name a school after when we build another school. And, you know, just to put names out on the table, I think the importance and a tie to this community is extremely important, and that's the part of this that I really appreciated. So glad that we're going to have it in policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, board members?
I think it's well-written.
You too. Thank you, Dr. McCullers.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mora, now you have the next thing on.
Thank you, Mr. Toiber. Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. It's my distinct pleasure this afternoon to present on behalf of Dr. Atkins, the superintendent, a proposed policy for the naming of school district facilities. We believe that you will find this proposal provides the board with a clear-cut and formal definitive process for naming school facilities, while at the same time, addressing strategic plan objective 7.1, which calls for us to leverage opportunities to generate additional revenues and services. So with that said, the presentation I'm going to share with you today provides an overview of the purpose of the policy. We'll share some similar existing policies that are in counties throughout the state, some examples of naming rights, the types of naming rights that we're proposing that we grant, some key considerations the board must make when determining whether or not to grant rights, some general guidelines for the application and approval of rights, some of the opportunities we believe are available in the district for naming, the evaluation of such rights, how do you distribute that revenue that's generated through a naming rights agreement, what the physical display of those rights will be, what are the durations for an agreement, the grandfathering of names, the termination of rights, as well as the request and approval process. Now, that's a lot to do within the little time we have, but we'll work through this as quick as possible. So the purpose of the policy is to establish criteria and procedures for granting naming rights in relation to school district facilities. That doesn't include this name of the school, which Dr. McCullers just covered with the proposed policy 9.10. This is basically facilities such as the gymnasiums, stadiums, grounds, cafeterias, and such. Another purpose for this is to generate donations from the community to help support our capital needs as far as construction and renovation of educational facilities. And it has the potential as well to lessen the financial burden on local taxpayers as we continue to grow and need improved infrastructure. As I mentioned, there are similar policies across the state. There are four that are closely related to what we're trying to do here in Lee County. Orange County has an advertising board policy. It's advertising, but it has a lot of similarities to what we're proposing. Volusia County also has a policy for advertising, again, some of the same components. Broward County has both an advertising and a naming rights board policy, not identical to what we're trying to do, but also very similar. Of the four, Palm Beach County has the most similar policy. So we'll look a little closer at what Palm Beach is doing. Their board policy 7.03 was first implemented in 1972. So they've had this policy for quite some time. It's undergone several revisions. May 2010 was the latest, and they're currently reviewing that policy. Their policy, like the proposal that we're going to bring forward, covers centers, school-owned, school board-owned facilities, building additions, areas within schools, stadiums, auditoriums, libraries, and other pieces of schools, not the naming of schools itself. So similar to what we're trying to propose here, with a distinct policy for pieces of a facility, but not a name of a school. Their process includes an application that's submitted via the school, which is what we're going to propose, as well as you'll see shortly. The school, in this case, is responsible for negotiating and establishing the revenue generated from such naming rights. Their durations can last up to 10 years, and they also have long-term durations that last up to 40 years. They have a policy that requires an annual payment for that naming right, and in their case, the school collects all of the revenue generated from the naming right. An example of a naming right that's been granted in Palm Beach County is the stadium at Jupiter Community High School. The Velocity Community Credit Union has bought the naming rights for that stadium for $100,000 over the next five years. The school has taken that money, since they are the only recipient of the funds, and actually used it to fund the installation of a state-of-the-art synthetic field turf. Another example of a county that has a similar policy is Orange County, where Lake Nona High School has sold rights to their stadium to Nemours Children's Hospital. That was at a cost of $108,000 over the next five years. It's a little different than the Palm Beach model, is they split the revenue. They share it with the district. It's a 60-40 split, with 60 going to the school itself. There are other examples outside of the state of Florida that I thought would be interesting to point out. In Newburyport, Massachusetts, the Rupert Knock Middle School has named their science labs. The Institution for Savings has bought those rights for $600,000. There's no duration, that's forever, for the useful life of the facility. Same goes for Renton School District in Washington, the state of Washington. The Renton High School has sold the naming rights to their Performing Arts Center to IKEA, and that's for $500,000. I just want to give you those examples because you can name things other than stadiums. However, the most primary example we have in the state of Florida is football fields and stadiums as such. The policy that we're bringing forward actually has two types of naming rights embedded in it. The first one is naming rights in consideration. The second is naming rights in recognition. While they sound very familiar, there are some distinct differences. Naming rights in consideration are just what the name intends, the consideration of a financial contribution, sponsorship, or some other transaction with the school district or a particular school. We also want to note that just because someone provides goods, services, monetary contribution, it does not guarantee them a right to naming. That naming right is awarded by the board. It's at the board's approval, and there is a committee approval before we bring it for recommendation to the board. The naming rights in recognition is probably what we're more familiar with here in the district, because we've been doing it for quite some time without a formal policy, is in recognition of goodwill or significant contribution to the school or to the district. In the proposed policy, we're looking for a person, or a group, or a company, or an entity, to meet at least one of the criterias. And the criteria is our service to the district or to the Lee County, Florida, community, an achievement of a distinguished alum, or a charitable contribution. And when these nominations are brought forward, the proposed policy calls for the committee review and board approval before we grant the rights. There are a lot of key considerations when considering whether or not to grant a naming right, and the policy calls out for some of these things. Some of the examples are balancing commercial interests with the roles of the facilities, what are you trying to name, and what is the name that you're applying to that building or that facility. The district's sense of identity is very important to both us and the community. We have a desired public image that we want to maintain, and how does that naming right or putting that name on a building affect that image? We also want to make sure, and the policy wants to ensure, that there's consistency with the district's vision and mission, and we have a shared purpose in the district, and how does that name impact that? We also want to assess the long-term effects of naming a building, since we have a five-year window, but it can be renewed. So you have to look forward to see what impact that name has on that school long-term. There are many people who could probably come forward to request naming rights, and we've looked at each type of entity that would come forward, and commercial entities struck us first, that there needed to be something in the policy to address that. And we certainly do not want to grant naming rights to any entity that associates itself with non-social responsible policies. That's pretty broad term, but I think we all know what the intent here is. We certainly don't want a commercial entity that's associated with the advancement of any political organization that promotes opposition to a candidate for elected office, or association with any company or individual whose actions are otherwise in violation of the law. Obviously, those all conflict with the image we want the school district to have. When we talk about facilities named for a company, group, or product, it's important, and the proposed policy does call out for holding and maintaining an exemplary record and positive public image, and a nonpartisan image at the same time. And the board would reserve the right to revoke a name if any information would come forward about a company, group, or product that is otherwise what we want for the public image of our school district. Individuals will come forward, obviously, for naming rights as well, and we'd want those folks to have an exemplary moral character. We would also want them to have made some type of contribution to the community, be it educational, humanity, or a community contribution. And we want them, obviously, to demonstrate strong, outstanding leadership, and a person that is of historical significance locally. Former district employees might be considered, but we're in the policy calling for them to have been retired or left employment of the district for at least five years, or be deceased. And again, with the naming rights for individuals, the board reserves the right to revoke naming rights at any time. So what type of opportunities do we have in the district for naming rights or for individuals, entities who might be interested? In this particular policy, we're calling for opportunities for naming portions of school facilities, such as things like auditoriums, theaters, gymnasiums, libraries, gardens, walks, athletic fields, facilities, concessions, and locker rooms. There's quite a few other opportunities as well, and we didn't limit it in the policy. But we want to make sure that we provide these types of opportunities for the community for naming rights. I think one of the greatest challenges this policy might have is the actual valuation of the naming rights. And we did a lot of research to look at what districts in the state are doing and what they're doing across the country, and there really is no true barometer for how much the worth is for a name on a building. It's all on a one-to-one basis, depending on the facility, where the facility is located. And I think you can all imagine a facility that's located where it's highly trafficked against a building that might be on the, off the beaten track, how that valuation might vary. But we do have some base values that we've established. It's a range based on our research. And examples of that are an auditorium for a five-year duration, a high school may be considered for naming rights considerations between 100 and 125,000, less for a middle school, obviously, because there's less traffic in a middle school auditorium, higher in a high school because of all the performances that go on there and the traffic that it sees from the public. In all of these policies, in this policy, we call for a non-refundable naming rights fee, which is actually the cost of the physical display of the naming rights. It's the sign, if you will, that's placed on a building or a classroom for that initial naming right. Distribution, we shared a couple of policies from other counties, and you saw that in Palm Beach, the school retains all of the revenue from the naming rights agreement. We saw that there was a split, 60-40, in Orange. And here in our policy, we're proposing a 50-50 split between the school and the district's general fund. Back to the physical display of naming rights, because again, it's so important, what we're putting on our buildings and what that message sends to the community. These things, we believe, need to be negotiated on a case-by-case basis, depending on what they're naming and what we are naming it. I think it's very important that we look at them uniquely as the requests come in. We want to consider the district's identification again, as well as the compliance we must have with all local regulations as far as code is concerned. It will be the board's discretion to approve the naming title, all the design considerations, such as the size, the shape, the color of the naming, as well as where we put the signage. The duration of the naming rights is also something that differs from policy to policy. We believe that if it's naming rights in recognition, it shall not be renamed except as determined by the board. So if you're recognizing someone, that name is there until the board decides that it needs to revoke that. For naming rights in consideration, remember, there's a distinction between the two. Naming rights is a contribution of some type of financial support or services. The policy recommends that it be reviewed every five years and either renewed or terminated at that time. The grandfathering of previously named facilities, I'm sure you guys get out to our schools all the time, and we have buildings, stadiums, cafeterias already named for folks, and this policy doesn't contradict that. So the policy actually is recommending that if we have facilities that have been named prior to this policy, that we should adhere to any contract that might be in place with that donor or that person. If there is no such contract, the policy recommends that we continue that name until the board decides that it needs to be revoked for some purpose. Determination of naming rights, things do change, and that's why we suggest the review every five years. The district has the authority, and basically the board has that authority, to revoke the naming of a facility for any reason, anytime. There will be some instances where contributions might have already been submitted, and if we revoke them, we will refund them proportionately, unless the revocation is due to a tarnished public image. In that case, we'll retain the contribution. We have a pretty thorough request approval process, but I'm just going to give you the high points. The policy recommends that the nomination form be submitted to the superintendent or the designated department. Typically, that's going to come from the school, if it's a school facility, so the principal will be the primary person to help anybody who wants to name something on his campus and bring that forward to the superintendent. There'll be an initial review and evaluation by the district's standards and equity department, professional standards and equity department. It's basically a quick check to make sure that we don't go down the road on this policy to see if there's anything outstanding that we can catch early on. Then there'll be a full review by committee of stakeholders appointed by the superintendent. We'll talk a little bit about what those review teams look like and how they're represented. A recommendation will be brought forward to the board if the review committee finds that it is a name that we should consider, and then the approval from the board will occur at a meeting. If it is approved by the board, then we'll write up a formal agreement with the nominator or the person being named, so that we have or the person being named, so that we have that officially. Going back to the review committees, we have two different distinct review committees based upon what facility is being named or proposed to be named. If it's a school campus facility, these are the folks that we, the policy recommends be on that review team appointed by the superintendent. The school administrator from the facility being named, the school advisory committee chairperson, the PTO chairperson, a student government representative, a student from the student government representative, student government body, a school development administrator, a communications department representative, someone from the business and finance division, a representative from the facility development and programming services department, and at least two community representatives that live local to the building being named, or facility being named. For non-school campus facilities, such as something like this building here or the ancillary buildings that we have, it would be the administrator or designate representing the facility under consideration, two non-administrative employees representing the facility under consideration, again, a business and finance division representative, someone from the communications department, again, representation from facilities development and programming services, and two community representatives. So what we provide you is a little overview of the proposed policy and this pre-briefing, and we're very interested in hearing your feedback or your input on that proposal. So I'll open it up to questions.
Ms. Dozier.
I had the opportunity several years ago to sit in a presentation at FSBA, and I believe, I know that Orange was, Orange County had representatives there, and I think Palm Beach had representatives. And at that time, I was so excited about doing this, and of course, I, I came back and I think I brought it here to the table. And we never really, I don't know if it's just been sitting there and you've been working on it all this time, but I am so excited about this, because this is one of the things that the public wants to see. They want to see us look for ways to generate funding. And my question, when I looked at this policy, was, I saw that we had auditoriums, gymnasiums, you know, blah, 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 the six areas that you had listed here, and I said, why not this LEPEC right here? You know, because this is, everything you said, it's a high pe, it's a high-traffic area. And you know, when we named this facility, we just, you know, again, we didn't have any, any criteria, we just put, I mean, I remember, Mr. Torby, you were on the board as well, we just kind of put it out there and said, okay, send us your suggestions, and we were getting all these different suggestions. And then, you know, somebody came up with this one and sent it out and got a lot of people to say this one, and so, therefore, here it is, LEPEC. But I can, I can imagine, like I think about Tico Arena, it used to be Tico, and now it's Jermaine. This is such a high-traffic area. I could see this being, and I'm just, for the lack of, I don't want to say anybody locally, any company locally, but I can see this being Microsoft local, I mean, Microsoft educational facility, or services, educational facility, something like that. I don't want to name any local people, because I'm sure, as soon as this comes out, I think that people are going to be, I'm not going to say they're beating our doors down, but I think they're going to be coming forward, I really do. And I think, because this is such a great way, I mean, think of all the people that through their lips would come, your name, if your name was on that, you know, where are you going? Oh, I'm going to so-and-so. So I, I think that's great. The fifty-fifty split, I really like that. And of course, if we did this building, this, that would come here, but then the split would be out, out to all the different schools, because that's where I see that that would go. On page five and six, where you've got about the naming of facilities, I think it's, yeah, five and six, down there on grandfathering names of facilities, I think you went over that very well, but I would venture to say that there's probably not a lot of contracts out there. I'd be, I'd just say that there are probably, because I know the way some of them were named, and if we want to continue down that road, I think it would, would behoove us to get contracts on those facilities, number one. Number two, I also see that, that one of the things that I heard that you said was that, you know, this, the, the principal would get to the superintendent, and then the superintendent would start dealing with it. The superintendent has so many things on their plate that they don't have time for, and I don't want to say they don't have time, there's a, there's a, there's a time for them to become involved, but I think what I saw in these other areas where they were using this, was that they had a particular department or a person that, this was all they did. In fact, they were, in one area, and I can't remember where it was, but that's all they went out. They went out and tried to sell names all the time. I mean, they were, they were the district salesperson. And, you know, it wasn't the school that had to get out and do that, but instead, it was a district-level employee. I would like to see us kind of go that route, because I think that would take the schools out of it, and it would also certainly, you know, the superintendent can get involved anytime he or she, he wants to, but I think that, that that would put it in the hands of somebody that's knowledgeable in that field, somebody that knows what they're doing, and, you know, they've, they've got their arms around it all the time, and they can just have regular meetings with the superintendent if need be.
We can set performance metrics so that they pay for their own job.
Absolutely, absolutely. You're right. You know, you're absolutely right with that. And I'm just real excited about this policy coming forward. I, I cannot tell you how, I was giddy when I read this, because I think it's something that we've got to look for new ways to generate money, and this is a way that we can generate a lot of money, I mean, a lot of money. And I am just so thankful for you and your staff for bringing this forward. Thank you so much for having that, that visionary thought to do this. I appreciate it, and I will certainly support it, wholeheartedly.
Fisher.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to say that this is very thorough, and I also felt some excitement about it. I think it's really well-done and covered every one of the areas that I could think of. I, I think this, having policies like this provide us a real opportunity. I do have two questions. I noticed that for school names, there is a statutory authority, but for naming rights, there is not. And I didn't know if that limits us in any way with that, or does it actually give us more of an open door? Should I ask Mr. Martin that?
But the, the only thing I found, I think it's the same statute that covers the naming of schools.
Oh, it does.
That is from my research, I'm sure Mr. Martin might have some input as well. We just found that by virtue of Florida Statute 1001.43, Section 4, the board is empowered to name schools and facilities. So I'm not sure, Mr. Martin, if that's the same statute that cover naming rights for facilities as well.
Mr. Martin.
It is, there's no statute that specifically addresses that issue, it's just a general authority of the school board to take actions with respect to its facilities.
Thank you. And then my other question is, kind of a generic question. What prompted this at this time? Is it looking for opportunities for revenue?
I think the strategic plan, for one, has that objective 7.1 in it, and also, in operations, it was a, a vision of Dr. Atkins who kind of pushed us along to, to put the policy in place.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
And I have to say that, a couple things. We have had some community interest that has been raised recently, that has also prompted this as well, and I, I do have to, to definitely give a nod to Mark and his leadership with putting this policy together and working with Dr. McCullers on the companion policy and moving those forward.
Thank you. Ms. LaRiviere.
Yes, and I think it's, it includes this with it. Let's say Veterans Park Academy of the Arts had been slated to get an auditorium built. However, when the economy fell through, it fell through and never been put back on the table. But let's say, just for instance, that Dr. Decimore has come into a whole lot of money, and she would like to donate $500,000, I just picked her because she's out in that area, $500,000 to have the naming rights, and she wants to name it after her father. For initial construction, for a building like that, that is its own standalone, would there be a naming right that would, would there be a possibility for that naming right to stay in place for a longer period of time than five years?
That's a good question. It's not covered in the policy, obviously, it calls for a five-year review and whether you renew it or reject it at that particular time. But I think there should be some consideration for long-term naming rights, especially when it's a significant contribution, as you mentioned. Maybe we include in the proposal some language that covers such, such an opportunity. But that, that would be in the intent of the proposal, though, is to encourage that type of donation, to help us support that capital need.
I think Palm Beach actually has a five, and I think they have to go as far as forty.
Forty, right, yeah. They do have those two timeframes, so they have a long-term and a short-term, so that's something we might want to add.
Well, and I think that that's important to have, sometimes, a long-term, but not indefinite, because forty years from now, nobody's, may know who that person is. And so, it does behoove us to occasionally make a change in the name, if people don't know the history.
Absolutely.
One option there would be to provide for a review every five years, but not necessarily a change. You could have an, an agreement that indicates that the initial term is for five years, and then there'll be seven automatic renewals after that, for a total of forty years, unless the school board took action at, at the end of a five-year term to, to terminate the, the naming right.
That'd be a good idea. I just want to add, you know, we, way back in the day, there was some, I tried to get monies, and we started out with putting it out in the fields, and it's good, you know, and you see it out in our stadiums, out in the, in the, towards the end zones and out in the, in the outfield. Then somebody came and they wanted to actually put advertising on our buses, but they actually wanted to go inside the buses, and we said no, because, you know, when the kids step on the buses, they belong to us, and we don't need them filled with any more commercials, even though they said, oh, it's just milk and jeans. We didn't care. We said, no, that's not, that's not appropriate. But this is something different, you know, whether it's the outside of the buses, you can plaster all of our 780 buses. I don't, you know, to me, make them colorful and, and get us money, but I think that for the facilities, the capital expenditures of naming stadiums, I mean, and, and event locations, if you see what we've, what we've accomplished with all the bowl games, there's not a single bowl game that, that used to be, it's all Alamo Stadium and so on, so forth. So I mean, the corporations are very warm to do this type of thing, it's a very good synergy with the community and with our district, so I'm, I agree with the rest of the board that this is a great idea and it's well overdue. And I also like Ms. Dozier's idea, that if we actually had, you know, we keep adding on things to do with our, with our district, this is an opportunity, Dr. Atkins, where if you build a, if you add this responsibility and you add a job description, but you actually have that job description that, you know, they will, their job performance is that a certain part of their revenue, you know, ten percent or five percent, whatever you may, may put the, the, the metric at, that's what their salary, they have to achieve, you know, a tenfold return, or we got the wrong person in the job. So, Ms. LaRiviere.
And, and actually, that could go even beyond naming rights of schools. Anything that they do to help generate any fundraising.
Absolutely.
And donations would be, I think that is a position we need, and I like the idea of it being commissionable.
Absolutely.
I like that idea.
Anything else?
No, we'll bring both of these back for November for a formal briefing, and look for an email from me next week. We'll begin the policy review of Chapter Five.
Great, great job, guys. Thank you, Ms. Elkin. And now, Ms. Elkin, you have Ms. Christensen and Dr. Pruitt.
I think my computer, Dr. Atkins, is set up with whoever's doing all of that, because whatever's happening up there is.
If you touch your screen, you can, you can switch it.
I had, where they were putting the new stuff on the computer.
Oh.
It was, it was not, my, my computer went away and then other stuff came up, but now it's fine.
Okay. All right, as they are preparing their presentation, I just want to mention, the administrative salary schedule, one of the things that we're really trying to accomplish here is to really develop a, a quality career ladder for our administrators. You know, one of the things that I think this board has made it very clear is, we want to have our most talented staff in our school buildings. And so, one of the things that they will be proposing is a new position, senior turnaround principal. This is a principal who has had experience at coming in and turning around a struggling school, is someone who's, who's done the job once, they, they have that experience, but now, we have a new challenge for them. So instead of just paying them the same and pushing them off to the new sc, challenge, it actually compensates that person at a little bit higher rate. The other thing is, as you think about it, it, it actually helps us retain talent in the buildings, rather than coming down to the district office here, is the only way to move up a ladder, but instead rewards you to stay in the buildings and keep, you know, keep, keep on the front lines, fighting the good fight. So that's one of the major proposals here. Another piece is about really mentoring and supporting these principals in the field through the use of our career ladder and mentor principals and so forth. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pruitt.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and board members. On behalf of Dr. Atkins, Ms. Christensen and I are here this afternoon to make some recommendations in regard to the administrator salary schedule. I'm going to sort of set the framework for you, and then Ms. Christensen is going to provide you with the details of our recommendations. And the framework by which this committee did the work was around what we know that research says that next to teachers in the classroom, it is the leadership that is the second-most, you know, factor that has impact in terms of, of school success. And in addition to that, as it relates to challenging schools or schools that are in need, it, the research is very clear that it usually is a dynamic leader or principal that allows that school to, you know, come out of that status and to be successful overall. And another piece of the framework is that it isn't just about the school leadership, but the research is also very clear that there needs to be support at the district level in terms of having programs and things in place to support principals and school leaders to be successful. So that's kind of the framework by which these recommendations were made, and it was a, a committee under the direction of Dr. Atkins, and with the input of teaching and learning, and also with the executive directors, you know, getting some input from the school leaders by which these recommendations were made. So that's kind of to set the stage, and then Ms. Christensen's going to provide you the
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. The proposed salary schedule changes for the administrator's salary schedule include updates to the compensation components, as well as the new job descriptions and positions. There are four compensation components that we're going to discuss with you this afternoon, the first being the salary adjustment. This section has been removed from the FY16 salary schedule, because administrators will not be receiving a salary adjustment this year. The second is in regards to components of pay for principals assigned to turnaround schools. It states hard to staff up, but it should state turnaround schools. These components of pay for principals assigned to these schools are currently outlined in a district process document and have been for the past several years, but the committee made, would like to make the recommendation to include these into the administrator's salary schedule, because they are components of pay in regard to their salary. The third is in regard to retention of school-level and student enrollment-size supplements for principals appointed to an administrator-on-assignment position. The committee discussed the compensation concern regarding those school-based administrators who are asked to come down and assist with an administrator-on-assignment position, and oftentimes, those individuals receive a reduction in pay when they move to the district-based position, because they lose their student-size supplement as well as their school enrollment, so those components. So the incorporation of this language into the salary schedule would allow them to maintain those supplements for the duration of their assignment. Please keep in mind that this does not mean if a district-based position opened up and that principal decided to apply for that position, that's a different circumstance. They would not keep their supplements in that case. And then the fourth is the principal-coach supplement, which is currently going to be offered in our TIF schools. And that's where, in order to be eligible for a principal, principal-coach supplement, a principal must be located at a TIF location, have four more years' experience as a principal, they must have completed principal training within the last three years, and received an effective or highly effective evaluation rating. The supplement will be paid up to $3,000, they'll be eligible, $2,000 will be paid upon acceptance of the position, and the remaining $1,000 will be paid based upon the coached principal receiving a highly effective rating. The second component of recommended changes is the new job descriptions and positions, as Dr. Atkins previously, previously mentioned, for a turnaround principal. as Dr. Atkins previously mentioned for a turnaround principal and a senior turnaround principal position. The committee identified the need and opportunity to become one of the first districts in Florida to have specific job descriptions and positions for turnaround principals. Research was conducted by the Department of Compensation and Recruitment, both within the state of Florida and outside the state of Florida, including Colorado, Indiana, New Jersey, Oklahoma, and Oregon. This research was utilized in conjunction with the expertise of Mrs. Martha Hayes, Director of Turnaround Schools, to develop the draft versions of the job descriptions for the turnaround and senior turnaround principal positions. You also have the drafts of those job descriptions with you. You should have received those with your briefing materials. In order to be eligible for a turnaround principal position, an administrator must be an experienced principal and have received either an effective or highly effective evaluation rating. And as Dr. Atkins mentioned, in order to be eligible for a senior turnaround principal position, an administrator must have previously led a successful turnaround school and have received an effective or highly effective evaluation. Our next steps in regard to this is, if you have any questions, and then we'd like to bring this forward on the October 20th meeting.
Dr. Atkins?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, as it relates to some of the folks that we do bring down here, one of the things that we did discuss in the committee is, is we want to really avoid the use of, you know, principal on assignment, administrator on assignment. If at all possible, we only would do this under very, you know, extenuating circumstances where there was a dire need because we would much rather use the job description process to actually describe what the job would be before bringing a person down into a position. Because you don't want all these people on assignment all over the district office. So while that's there so that we can attract talent to come down here for a project, that if this is something that's intended to be long-term, that it's our job to put together a job description for that specific position. So I don't want there to be a principal on assignment forever and a day and retain those school-based supplements. The other is we are not moving forward with a salary adjustment at this time. You know, that's something that the board can consider at a later date, but at this point, we're very interested in trying to work toward doing what we need with our turnaround schools. We're going to be bringing back at some point a plan for really addressing our schools in need or challenging schools that will be very aggressive. This is one component of that plan that we'd really like to see in place and we wanted to move forward with it as soon as we possibly could.
Board members, Ms. Dozier.
Well, I guess I'd like to know the rationale for coming up with a principal had to have demonstrated four years of success and be highly effective. Where did the four years come in? And I ask that because I know that there might, there might be some principals that after four years are very capable, but I know a lot of times, principals are still learning and getting their feet on solid ground, you know, in that fourth year. And that just, because I know we also, at one point, it was put that after three years in a classroom, a person can become a principal. I completely disagree with that. I've always disagreed with it because if you look and you go back into a study on those principals that were only in a classroom for three years and then became a principal, they've either struggled or they're still struggling because they just don't, they don't have the, they don't have the foundation from being out there in the trenches that they really need to be able to interact with their, with their teachers and staff. And, and that really concerned, concerns me. It still concerns me. I know it's still going on because I have seen some teachers that have been thrown into a principal ship too fast and then they don't have success. And anytime we promote somebody, that's one of the things that I always say, let's make sure that we give this person the support that they need so that they can be successful. But, you know, I know we have a mentoring program where we, you know, put them with another principal, but that other principal's got their hands full with their own school and so forth. So I don't know where the four years came from. I'm, I'm kind of struggling with that. I, I think sometimes just people being around and being seasoned and also having the, having had the opportunity to build a larger network of, you know, peers around the district that they can work with and stuff. Four years just seems like such a tight number to me.
I can't disagree with you. Other than to say that, you know, it is, A, it's a minimum requirement and it's also coupled with five years of successful administrative experience. So you got four years of successful teaching experience, five years of successful administrative experience, so nine years total would be the minimum requirement. And then we up the requirement for the senior turnaround principal because they would have had to do an experience as a successful principal, then a turnaround principal. But I, you know, we are open to suggestion, but again, it is a minimum requirement.
And I have to applaud Ms. Dozier for doing, you know, for raising that bar, but I want to also challenge this board and you, Dr. Atkins. I like what you're doing, but I think we're going way too slow and way too, and way, way inferior. Let me explain what I'm saying. For any successful organization of our size to be successful, we have to have the power at the spokes. You can't have the power all concentric at the hub. It just doesn't work. We're just too big to have the center power thinking that they can control everything that needs to be done in a district the size that we have. We have to push the power to our schools and what that means is we need the best, not just the, you know, good. We need the best in our schools. Now, how are we going to do that when you look at downtown, that we have assistant superintendents at an eighteen, assistant directors at sixteen, a director at fifteen, a director of level two at fourteen, and assistant director at thirteen, all the money is downtown, assistants, principals are at a fourteen. Should be the other way around. People shouldn't want to be the best principal and then try to get downtown because that's where the money is. The money should be at the schools. The money should be the eighteens. The highest paid person should be our superintendent. Our second highest paid person should be our principals, period. Everybody should be wanting to be in a school because they're the ones that make the difference. They're the ones deciding assisting our teachers and helping our kids, period. Our seventy, hundred and twenty best, you know, our facilities, our hundred and twenty best people should be in the schools, period. We fill in the backfield downtown what we need to support to make that happen. So I challenge this board, I mean, and I don't mean by, I mean, it's not something we can do overnight, but I really think what we need to do, if this board supports that, if we really are serious about making our schools the best they can be, then what we need to do is we need to say, okay, we need to put the best pays out there at the schools and then readjust downtown by saying, what's the, what's the, how much do we pay the people downtown based upon competitive salaries across the board? Adjust it, may stay the same, may go up, may go down. I don't really care. Whatever it is to maintain the, the support we need downtown. And if people don't like it, well, good because we want the best. I mean, we've got some of the best principals that have been, I mean, most of our, if not all, of our main people downtown have all successfully run our schools. You know, you look back at their success story and they were, I mean, Dr. Atkins is, you know, I'm looking at, I mean, we're, that's what we've got. And so, but they did, you know, their progression. It's nobody's fault. Inherently, we've designed our system to be, you know, our best teachers become certified teachers, golden apple teachers, what, so they can become assistants, assistant principals. Well, we're losing our best teachers to become administrators. They were great in the classroom. Let's fix it so that they actually have a career path to stay in the classroom and do what they do best for children and figure out a way to do that. So that's what I challenge you, Dr. Atkins, and I challenge this board. We got to get serious. I mean, I appreciate, applaud this as a, as an immediate effort because I think you came in and this is something that I think you've had, been in a passion for you because we've spoken for, for years. And I applaud, applaud this, this cabinet for doing this, but don't, don't take baby steps. I mean, we need to take Lee County and fix Lee County because it's broken. I mean, it's just inherently broken because it's the way it's always been. And I think that everybody here, you know, and I know, looking at the, here, people, I could go back in the school. You know, all of them would because you loved it. And a lot of people come down here and that's one of the things they hate. You know, well, we hated it, but the money's down here, but we wanted to be with the kids. Well, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. So, Ms. Dozier.
And I could not agree with you more. And we actually saw that we were losing so many of our good teachers to going into administration and we recognized that there was, we've got to do something about that. We've got to entice the teachers and we've got to make it to where they can, they can afford to stay in the classroom.
Absolutely.
And, you know, that was what we, we began working on several years ago and we just didn't get far enough because we started having all this turnover. So if we can have stability and start working on this, I could see this happening. And I think it will be absolutely one of the best things that we could do for this school district. And I mean, it would be like a vitamin, you know, a vitamin shot in the arm just to give, you know, the, the system that energy level back that it needs to get. So, I mean, I, I support everything that you said wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Ms. LaRiviere.
I agree. Have a little bit of a caveat to mention there that we need to also consider. I also know the time and the mentoring that many of our district people do here. So I think we have to, there has to be a good balance as we move forward with this. I do have a major concern, I've always had a major concern about teachers moving too quickly out of the classroom, but sometimes it wasn't because that teacher was the best teacher. They just didn't want to teach in the classroom. And my feeling is a teacher needs to prove themselves that they really want to be in that classroom because you have no business being a principal unless you want to teach your children.
I agree with that completely.
Yes. Well, I, I know, as Mrs. Dozier said, we started working on this a few years ago and we have teacher leaders who are able to increase their salary. And I, I think we need to look down another step also. I think we need to make sure that we have a really good plan that supports retaining our best talent, teachers, young administrators. So I, I have had some concerns that there have been people who have been competent, qualified, and good people for the jobs and for some reason, they haven't made it through the process. So I question our process. Is it the best it can be? Do we, you know, are we missing good talent? And are we losing people too soon because of that? Because they, they feel that the opportunity's not there for them. It may be there for someone who's, you know, a member of a certain group or something. And I know I'm really stepping out here, but I hear this a lot. So I, I wanted to bring it to the table when this conversation started. I, I would like to see us review the process and to also give people opportunities to have the input. You know, as we talked about the whole, you said the power in the spokes. Well, I, I think that if we truly are a quality organization, then all of the people are going to have input. And I think that we are sometimes missing some of the information that we could garner from opening the doors and allowing our people who are early on in the system to tell us why all of a sudden they're saying, no, this isn't what I signed up for. I'm leaving and I'm going to go sell shoes at Jacobson's or something. And, and I just know that we have a tremendous turnover and what we're doing isn't stopping that. I mean, and, and I know that some of the issues are not necessarily internal issues. We have a lot-
Side pressure.
We have a lot of pressure from external, from the state and federal government and I don't think that's going to get any better. So I think we really need to find a way to identify the talent and then nurture them, support them, and, and retain them.
Thank you. Ms. Dozier.
Well, I certainly want to applaud you for putting that out there because that has been a perception that has been going on for several years now that it's not what you can do or what you bring to the table, but instead it is who you know and that's the only way to get in the door. And that just is one of the things that just sticks right here with me. If somebody's capable, then, you know, they should be given an opportunity. They should be giving, given a shot. And, you know, I, I just applaud you putting that out there because there have been conversations about people being blackballed for one reason or another. And I don't like that. I don't like any part of it. And if people don't like me because of that, so be it. I don't care. I'm a big girl and I got tough skin. Because everybody that's worthy, everybody that's capable, has the opportunity to come through that door. Just because they don't know somebody or just because they don't, they don't go out with the right people and they're denied that right, that's wrong. And I have been hearing that this has been going on for quite some time. And, and I, I've, I've raised the issue. I haven't raised it at the table. And that's why I applaud you for having the, the chutzpah to bring it up here at the table. So thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier. Further, you want to add, Dr. Atkins, before?
Yeah, just a few things. First of all, I have to say, I'm actually excited about the challenges that you have thrown out there. We had some conversations, even had the conversation this morning with Ms. Hayes and Ms. Fletcher about really just getting extremely aggressive with, you know, schools and differentiated accountability in terms of, of getting our best and brightest staffs into those particular buildings. And I'm talking aggressive, bold because we're going to have to be. They're, they're really in need. The second thing that's exciting is that, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to talk a little bit more about it tonight, but, but hiring and retaining talent is probably our number one challenge that we're going to have this year. And that goes, that, there's a lot of different employee groups that applies to. We're going to talk about bus operators this evening, but we're also talking about teachers, administrators, tech people. We're going to have to think outside the box in order to attract these people to, to Lee County and to keep them here. And then where do we want them? We want them in our most challenging schools. We've got to design our career ladder, our teacher career ladder to, to get good teachers here, keep them in the classroom, and then reward them for being in the classroom, reward our exceptional administrators for leading those schools. So I'm excited about the prospects. Also, just, just so you are aware, I am meeting with folks that, you know, some of them that have been, you know, former students, I know that are talented, that, that, you know, are considering other things, but we'd like to talk to them and see if, if they might, you know, consider some opportunities here within the district as other administrators as well. So my, my door is open for hearing, hearing those folks because ultimately what we want are talented people working where they need to be. The right people on the bus and in the right seat.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Anything further, Dr. Pruitt?
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Christine and Dr. Pruitt. And now, we now move to teaching and learning with Ms. Ralph. You have Lori Brooks and I think Ms. Rodriguez? Yep. Our counseling plan and comprehensive school counseling.
Do we have a new agenda?
On the back page, it's F. Sorry.
Mr. Torby, could we take just a five-minute recess?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to recess here. It is now three oh five. We'll come back at three ten. We'll come back at 3:10. It's now me-
Planning services and using data to measure the results for students. This moves counseling from random acts of guidance to comprehensive service delivery for all students. It also moves school counselors beyond the position of school counselors to the implementation of a school counseling program. A comprehensive school counseling program provides developmental opportunities and experiences that address three central student development areas. Personal social, which is learning to live, academic, which is learning to learn, career, which is learning to work. It includes sequential activities designed to address the needs of all students by helping them to acquire competence in the knowledge of themselves and others, and identifying their educational goals and in their own career development. Comprehensive programs shift the role of the counselor from traditional guidance to comprehensive student development. For example, where a school counselor may have traditionally worked in isolation, they are now working in collaboration with other staff and community members. Also, traditionally, a school counselor addresses a crisis comprehensively. They add an additional layer by implementing preventative strategies and prevent future
On this slide, you'll see the diamond that represents the ASCA national model. This model follows the quality continuous improvement cycle that many of us identify with in education and in the corporate world. The program foundation is the actual focus of the program. It's based on student competencies and professional competencies for school counselors, and it contains the vision and the mission, the program beliefs, and the program goals. This foundational piece determines how every student will benefit from the school counseling program, and then it also focuses on identifying what we call your gap students, those that need more, and using data to identify where we have some extra need, and then developing closing the gap goals to close those gaps for students. The delivery and management of the program, you'll notice, are above the foundation but still located next to each other. The management are the assessments and the tools that the school counseling program will use to gather data and information, and also do needs analyses, time assessments, program goals, the tools that help them develop that, and then it determines the delivery of how they actually serve their students through direct and indirect student services. The accountability piece is at the top of that diamond because that's where really you use your data once again at the end of your program year to determine where did we move that needle? From where we started, where are we now? And then if the needle moved, what is working that we want to continue? And then what else can we be doing to assist that positive move further? And if things aren't working as well as they should, again, that continuous quality improvement piece, what can we do differently to impact students? You'll notice around the diamond, there are four words, and it's leadership, advocacy, collaboration, and systemic change. And around that diamond, that is your school counselor as a position, and as a master's degree professional, those are the four themes that that position brings to the schoolhouse. You'll notice a lot of that also complements your leadership team and a lot of what your teachers do in the classroom. And counselors have that special skill set in addition that's unique to the counseling piece. The advocacy piece is not only for student advocacy, but systemic advocacy for change. And then they're collaborators with all stakeholders. And systemic change, counselors can help identify areas of the system that need to change for students. So you may wonder, what is the power of a comprehensive school counseling program? Well, within a comprehensive program, all means all. We hear about tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions for students when we talk about intervening. And really, a counseling program model follows that. Tier one, those are services and things we want kids to be able to know and do by the time they leave us, whether it's leaving a grade level, leaving elementary, middle, high, or going on into their adult lives. We have to identify what are those things that have to target all students. And then, of course, it's going to be removing barriers to learning and increasing student achievement for kids who have greater gaps and greater need. Collaboration is key, so data is key, collaboration is key, and also really being intentional and targeted in how we're implementing our services. So comprehensive school counseling programs really do unleash the power of the school counselor, because counselors have a unique skill set, and as you already know, they're required to have a master's degree in this area. And we want to move counselors and counseling from situational, reaction-driven responses to deliberate, data-driven, comprehensive programming that removes barriers to learning, positively impacts student achievement, improves their social and emotional well-being, and provides opportunities for comprehensive career planning and development. So how are we progressing in this area? Well, we are undergoing ongoing implementation. Mary Lynn and I continue to train school counselors. They've been using data for years. We've been doing closing the gap projects in every school. So now we're trying to grow that into comprehensive counseling plans that will become implemented programs. So it's really kind of baby steps as we go, and now we're really ready, and we have 21 Phase One schools that are ready to write their program plan this year with the intent of implementing the following year. Now, it doesn't take a year to write a plan, but in our district strategic plan, we have developed a year-long plan writing training, and then with the target of implementing the next year, to provide schools the opportunity and counselors the opportunity to do their jobs every day, but also have some targeted time to develop this and use their data and analyze this. In addition, we've talked with leadership teams at the school levels to help them understand what the ASCA national model is and the potential for positive growth in their students following this particular implementation model. And Mary Lynn and I are available, and we have been going out to schools to provide onsite support, answer questions, and assist them in identifying program goals for their Do you have any questions for us?
Ms. Fisher.
I didn't even raise my hand. I remember when, in 2003, when the ASCA model was rolled out. In fact, I remember actually making a presentation to the board myself about it. So it's been 15, no, 12 years, and we're taking, still taking baby steps. And I want to, first of all, appreciate both of you for the work that you do in supporting the counselors. And I want to mention that school counselors are often the most highly educated people in the building, because a master's degree in counseling requires many more credits than a master's degree in administration. So I know that focus area three of the strategic plan is designed to help us meet our requirements for recommended actions for the accreditation report, and I'm glad to see that you're moving forward on that. And this looks great, but what about the reality of what's going on in the schoolhouse? Does everyone else in the, on the team in the schoolhouse understand what it is the counselor really is supposed to do? How many of our counselors are working their job description? I know that very few of the services now should be reactive, but sadly, we have crises, and there's never any good time for that. Being, you know, testing administrators and collecting data does not help when you have a caseload of over 400, and maybe 40 of those kids are not on target for graduation if you're at the high school, or some of them have, you know, a dog was killed by a car, mother got arrested last night, there's gunfire in the neighborhood, and this, these are the issues that are the barriers to learning. And these are the situations that our school counselors are trained to handle, at least to intervene and make referrals out to appropriate community agencies. And we have a wonderful network of community agencies now who want to work with the schools and have made efforts to make themselves available. So I think this is great, and I just want to say that I hope that we can create a level of understanding that the reason we were a target area with the accreditation report was because we were falling short a little bit in this district, and it's not only Lee County. But I think that we also need to provide opportunities for those people who have that specialized training to use it and to do the jobs that they're designed to do, not necessarily monitor E-2020 classes, or do an hour and a half a day of hall duty when there are some real academic, career preparation, and personal social issues that need to be addressed. And thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Ms. LaRiviere.
One of the things that I like seeing that's in here is the fact that at the targeted schools, the principal and counselors are supposed to be meeting regularly to make sure that that plan is implemented. I think one of the best things that happened last year was when we adopted the job description for the, and I can't remember the title for it, for the person who's the intervention specialist. Too often, that was just handed over to the school counselor, and that is not what a school counselor needs to spend their time doing with that paperwork. I think that was one of the best things that we could have done, because then it allowed for, really saw, principals saw, it's a different component. I don't know that all of the principals really got it, how much time it took away from actually meeting needs of all of the students. And I'm excited about it. I think one of the hindrances that may have helped, that may have been there along the way was in 2003, when we were trying to start that, along came AIPs and then PMPs that got in the way of school counselors, and I like...
And the budget.
And the budget, but, well, budget comes into play too, but it was, more kept getting added to the counselor. That really was not a true counselor position. And then along with that came the part that now many of our schools are not necessarily putting testing coordinator as a role of the school counselor. It's, you get a supplement, so you do it off contract time. So many times now, they're giving that to other staff members. And again, that's another thing that helps to relieve during that time. So I'm glad that we're seeing some positive changes happening. Thank you for the work that you girls do all the time in servicing our counselors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dozier.
Well, tongue in cheek, I was going to say, tell us, Ms. Fisher, how you really feel, because I know she's been, she's been the cheerleader for this and has been very passionate about this since she's been on the board. And the one thing that I'm going to say is, as the world continues to turn, and as we continue to have crises out in the community, as we continue to have situations where there are shootings in schools, there are, you know, even though it, you know, it may happen out in Oregon, it still impacts our children, whether we realize it or not, because the children see it, they hear it on the news, and, you know, there's always that little thing, could that happen in my school? And, you know, the role of the counselor is so very important, and I know that we've only got just this one pot of money, but I think more than ever now, the role of the counselor has become so critical in the school because of all of the needs of our children. And I'm going to say, the percentage of our students that are on free and reduced lunch, you know, that's an indication right there of the population that we have that needs counseling. You know, the students that aren't coming to school with clean clothes because they're living out of their car or whatever. So, you know, I just, I applaud Ms. Fisher for being on the front with this, and I know that this is something that we've got to address, because we do have students that have needs out there, and we need to make sure that their needs are being met, because they can't learn if they've got other issues in front of them. And, you know, they say that, you know, a child can't learn if they're not fed, and, you know, they don't have all the essentials for survival, and how true that is. And there, you know, it used to just be food, shelter, and clothing, but now that list is extended to much more. So with all of this naming of facilities, we're going to find a lot of money to be able to do what we do. I just have every confidence in that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier.
I want to, I'm excited about the transgression or the transformation of the comprehensive program and the fact that, I mean, our counselors are amazing, but they can't do it all. And the fact that, you know, it really has to be the all-school personnel, where the counselor is the resource and the lightning rod, but the other people, everybody in that school has to focus on our kids and what they're doing in their lives and what they're doing in the future, and to make it a community development type program, and that, because otherwise, we're never going to make it work. There's just not enough, you just can't slice up our counselors in enough little pieces to make that happen. So I really encourage that and encourage the work that we're doing with our principals, and again, goes back to that whole culture of our schools to make that important, because again, if that becomes part of the curriculum and part of the everyday life, everybody's involved, everybody asks, you know, our students, what are you doing? You know, where are you going? You know, everybody from, you know, from our, from our support people to our bus drivers to our, everybody, when everybody's engaged, using the resources in the direction of our counselors, we all become, make much more difference. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we now go to public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please give our disclaimer for public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on the agenda of this briefing meeting. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the agenda.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the right half that would like to speak? I have one. Is there anybody on the left side? We have one, Mr. Fox.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate it. The naming rights of the buildings, good idea, I guess. It's anything that can bring money in, but it's kind of hokey, to be honest, you know? The district can't take care of its business without resorting to something like this. That being said, though, if it is pursued, the money should be put towards debt retirement. I'm going to keep at you guys till you stop being obtuse and pay attention, right? You have $51 million out there every year that's going out of county, away from the kids. It's your fault that it's like that. So if you do collect this money, and it, you know, if you can do it, great, if it's not tacky and it doesn't take away from everything else. But that money shouldn't go to operations or general fund, it should go straight to debt retirement. Simple as that. You want teachers, you want to pay teachers more, there's some money there for it. You want to maintain, you want to get the buildings back on the maintenance schedule, there's the money for it. You want to have money for TIF, there's some there. Guys, that's where your effort needs to be. You want to improve the morale of the district, take action. Talk, 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 talk. This board's great at talking, it's not so good at taking action, even though it might not be popular. Political types out there say, oh, taxes, taxes. You've already taxed them, you just haven't collected it. Once again, it's a good initiative, and I do applaud initiative without a doubt, but the money, if it is brought in, needs to be used wisely, because that $51 million is recurring every single year. Or you can use that money to build a new building and not have to finance it, which would also save a lot of money. We keep going through this, and I will keep coming in here and keep after you. This board is obtuse. Look the word up, okay? You keep talking about, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, but you don't do it. Have some courage, go after the sales tax initiative, even if you can put coin collection...
So you'd be on the scope of the subjects on the agenda at this point. Back to the naming rights will be just fine.
I have left, Mr. Martin.
You have 50 seconds.
50 seconds, thank you. On the other one, the administrative compensation plan, I'm all for giving teachers more, but I went to the union's negotiations two or three weeks ago with the school, and one of the initiatives the union wanted was for a teacher who's highly effective for three years running to be guaranteed reappointment to their job, and they were told no. I mean, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. You know, if you have, isn't that the point? To get teachers who have a goal, if that's an incentive to, wouldn't that be an incentive for a teacher to be highly effective? So maybe the board ought to start working with the teachers instead of against them. Thank you very much.
Mr. Fox. Now going to move to board member comments. I'll start with you, Ms. Fisher.
I'm going to reserve mine for this evening's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dozier.
Well, I'm going to try to be very quick. Last evening, I had the opportunity to emcee the Keepley County Beautiful Award Ceremony. This was their 26th year for "Leave the Scene Clean," and I have brought each one of you a little gift. And what it is, it is a calendar. Ms. LaRiviere, that is...
That's all the artwork.
Susan, okay, that's all of theirs. Do you need one of these for the record?
Sure.
Ms. Benzinger. Okay, all right. But this is something that is done every year, and it's a partnership that we have had with Keepley County Beautiful. It was a wonderful ceremony. You can look through, and you can see there were over 2,000 students that entered, and you can see the students that actually won, and it was just a great event, and it was my honor to be asked to do this. Also, I'm going to talk to the issue of debt reduction, which is something that I usually don't speak to, but, and I've heard continuously, you know, take the money and pay for the school as you go. Well, I think that's what we're doing, is paying for the school as we go. I would ask the person that's out there, did you pay cash for your house when you purchased it? I think not. You're paying for it as you go. As far as your comment that we need to quit working against the teachers, I resent that statement, because as long as I have sat on this board, I have been a person who has advocated for teachers. I will continue to advocate for these teachers as long as I am on this board. Just because you have the microphone, it doesn't give you carte blanche to say whatever you want to say to all of us sitting here. So I'm going to tell you that to make a statement that we need to quit working against the teachers and work for them, I think was a very uncalled-for statement. I think it was inappropriate on your part, and in the future, I think you should be more guarded with your words. Thank you. That's all I have today.
Ms. LaRiviere.
A question I want to ask Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin with regard to the part that Mr. Fox was discussing with the negotiations, with if there had been three years of being highly effective, then being guaranteed they would not lose their position. Is that something that we cannot guarantee because of Florida statute when they made
I can answer, you know, from a contractual standpoint, and I'll let him, you know, answer from a statutory standpoint. You know, statute, the statute actually did take away the professional service contract after, I want to say 2011. Anyone hired after that point cannot have a professional service contract, but instead must go with an annual contract. We are working with our associations to craft some protection for our teachers. The purpose is to help our retention efforts. So the one provision that I think Mr. Fox is referring to has to do with, we've got three different types of, or two scenarios. One, we're looking at highly effective teachers that also have, they have to have a highly effective rating one year and at least an effective rating that second year, have a position at the school. That would be, those folks would be renewed, and if you have an effective rating three years in a row, and again, position at the school, then that would be somebody that we would also retain. We also have some qualifiers, though, that they have to obviously have, you know, the qualifications in place and so forth. And that is, right now, just merely a tentative agreement. We've agreed to it, and we're still working through the language part, but that was, I know Mr. Dodick oversaw that, but I've seen the communications going back and forth, and we'll be participating in their upcoming session as well. So that's where we are from a contractual perspective, because we can put, we can add on protections if we so choose in contract.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, my focus was elsewhere.
I understand.
Where it should have been. Could you repeat that question again?
Sure. I was just wondering if the statute that was put in place where teachers after, hired after 2011, would have to be on annual contract, if that would prevent us from doing anything with regard to providing a more continuing services type contract? Does that come into the way of...
Yes, I believe it does. I think with respect to teachers hired after that date, that you're restrained by the statute to provide only the contract allowed by the statute. That was, that was the purpose of that enactment, yes.
Okay, so then we would just do some creative things within our contracting piece to help with that, Dr. Adams?
Right. What we're doing again is, you know, we're working toward the retention piece. We looked at data when we were tackling this problem and the number of folks that were not reappointed for, not reappointed, and then were subsequently actually hired during the next school year. So in other words, I'm at school A, I didn't have a position at that particular school, had an effective evaluation, and I ended up getting picked up at another school. So we wanted to actually work a way to reduce that churn, because that's cost money every time you churn through that position. So we worked in negotiations to develop a system where if you have somebody who's, that's just an effective rating, if they retain that over a three-year period of time, including the current year, and there's a position available at the school of which they're qualified, then they would be reappointed.
Thank you. Let's see, I'll do a little bit today, this afternoon, and then some tonight. Last Thursday, I came in to greet the families and students who were here, no, was it, yes, it was last Thursday, for the Do the Right Thing Awards. I wasn't able to stay the entire time and had to, because I had a project that I was working on. But the next day, I went to Tortuga Preserve and helped my Rotary Club distribute dictionaries to all of the third graders, and I had the pleasure of meeting one of the students that had been here for the Do the Right Thing. And I just want to applaud him, because he had provided CPR for his grandfather to help save his grandfather's life. And I just, it's amazing what our little guys can do. And with help of somebody coaching and telling them what they can do, they can do it. And I love how all of our students, and for the most part, most all of our students rise to the occasion. I've had fun going to football games and trying to not cheer for one team more than the other, because, you know, I have to be fair about this, but I do go and greet both, I make sure I greet both sides and tell coaches and everyone how proud I am of their teams and the way that they're training them, and the other skills that they're teaching them along the way with regards to their ethics and how they treat each other. And I'm always amazed that when someone's injured, they all take the knee and they bow, and that's just an automatic reaction that our athletes are trained to do during that time. Again, I'm proud to be part of the insurance task force meeting. We are working diligently on, we are already working on creating the pieces we need to put out RFPs for, in the future, for some areas, and we are also looking at the rollout for this year's open enrollment. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with a lot of intelligent men and women that work to help us make wise use of our funds, meet the needs of all of our staff members, and provide the best services possible. So I, kudos to them, and I just want to say kudos to all of our staff members. And you're not all here today, but please share with your other staff members that I know, I speak for the board in this, that I'm amazed at how all of you continually rise to the occasion yourselves and put forth those diligent efforts and best practices to serve our schools, to serve your board members and answer questions, and I just want to thank all of you for what you do. want to thank all of you for what you do. And that's going to be all for now.
Thank you. I am the liaison for the DAC Committee, and this month, the DAC Committee is actually going to have a presentation from our lobbyist, Mr. Bob Serra, to talk about a legislative platform and explain, hopefully to our schools, our SACS and our DACS, you know, what a lobbyist actually does and what we're trying to accomplish in Tallahassee, and prepare questions to get ready for in November. We actually have commitments from most of our delegation personally to attend a forum here for our DAC meeting in November, that we're hoping to get a lot of parents to be able to meet with our delegation. And they were very excited, you know, our delegates, to actually be with our parents and be with our school-based people, so they can actually get in touch with their constituents, to actually see, you know, this is what we're doing as far as education. And they do a whole lot on a whole different areas, and education, unfortunately, is only a small portion of the things they have to do, but they do it very earnestly and very hard, and they think they're doing the right things, and, you know, here's our opportunity to say, "Well, did you think about this?" And so it's a great opportunity, and they're excited to be here, and the response has been quite overwhelming, so we're hoping to get a whole lot of parents and SACS to attend that and get a better representation and a good dialogue with our legislative delegation. Board members, you know, last meeting, board meeting, we had some discussion, and I just want to throw it out to you again, because where we left it, nothing's going to be on the board meeting. And for pragmatics to have, if we wanted to come forward on the board, as far as for, to be able to be an agenda item, I wanted to throw out to you, you know, you've read in the paper, the news press still considers as calling Dr. Atkins an interim superintendent, even though he's not, because legally and statutorily, there's no such thing. His contract has no end date in it, so he is our superintendent, and for, in perpetuity if we so choose. Unfortunately, this board has not been, we have not done a good job, in my mind, of clearly articulating that, an intent. What are we going to do? How long are we going to keep him? If we're going to keep him? If there's somebody else coming in? If we're doing a search? And there's a lot of inherent problems with that. And one of the problems that we have is the stability of our district. Everybody has those same thoughts, and it's hard for Dr. Atkins to do his job when everybody wonders, is he just warming the chair? If he's doing the job, and for how long is he doing the job? And if we have faith in him to do it for any length of time, or if it's just to hold the seat for another guy to hold the seat, why would we do a search? The second problem that we have is that if we decide, if we do a nationwide search, I don't think anybody will argue, if you ever looked at Dr. Atkins' curriculum vitae, his resume, he would by far fall in the top five of any national search nationwide. He has been the principal, he has been in operations, he has done almost every facet of a district that is one of the top 10 in the country. So it is not a small, the fact, you know, Lee County is bigger than, than most of the counties across the country. So he would fit, just as Dr. Connie Jones did when it was out in Las Vegas. It wasn't easy for her to make the top three when you're talking about a district as big as the one that was out in Las Vegas. So he's going to be, you know, he would come up in that, in the top five, and anybody that, if we did a nationwide search, everybody would see, if we allowed Dr. Atkins to stay in the position and apply for the job, we'd have the inside guy applying for a job that would be in the top five. It is just inherent, whether it's true or not, that there is a perception that he would have the inside track. And I've been told by many different people across the state that there will be a lot of people that are not going to risk their current positions or even go through the effort when the inside guy is applying. So then we could also say, "Well, let's not let him apply," which I don't think would be very fair to Dr. Atkins, because I think it, you know, he has indicated that he definitely wants the job, and I, as I've articulated, I think he's qualified to apply for the job. So then the third option would be to pull him out, and we put somebody else in, second stringer, to run the job, when, you know, right now, he's the best interim. Why we do what we need to do? And I think that would be very, I think that would be very ill-advised for this board to take somebody who has already begun to provide stability and direction for the board to put somebody else in in the interim, just to give him that opportunity. So that is why I brought to the board an idea, just to contemplate, is if we take the top guy and we make him a superintendent for a set period of time, whatever the board, and I just threw out 17 months, but I'm open to the board for any others, and I'm hoping to get input, so we all come to this together. But to say, put a time certain, and give him the opportunity to do the job, and give him enough time so that when we give him evaluations, we, this board would know, he's the guy for the job. And if he is, you know, then, and this may carry over past the, you know, my big fear is, if we do a national search now, we bring in somebody, they've got about a four or five months to really hit the ground running, where potentially four new board members could come in and say, and not see the guy really, you know, taking traction yet, and saying he can't do the job. Well, it's really not fair, because he really hadn't had the time, but they, you know, we don't know the dynamics. Conversely, if Dr. Atkins is here, and he actually does the time through our time, and then goes through the new board, then we give him a couple months, even with a new board, to find out if the dynamic is right. If it's not, then the new board would make that decision. We'd go for a county-wide, or a countrywide search. The advantages would be just numerous, and I want to articulate them. Number one is, the board would have decided that Dr. Atkins isn't the guy. So we don't have to worry about that inherent problem of the current guy is applying for the job. So problem number one solved. Problem number two is, Dr. Atkins, you know, if you know the integrity of the man, if we tell him he doesn't do the job, he would say, "Okay," but he would still stay on, because that's, he loves this district. He would be there to help the new guy come in and be successful. What new superintendent from around the country wouldn't want to come in and have the guy that just ran the district for a year and a half, giving you, telling you where the landmines are, what to watch for and not, and helping you get this, and be your right-hand man? I mean, you'd be crazy not to have, to want that type of support. Number three is, we now would have the ability to stabilize this community and stabilize this district for a year and a half with that main focus, so that when we do send it out for a country, a nationwide search, if we'd have to, we would have a whole lot more people applying than currently in the situation, if you look at our past history over the last year and a half, for sure, and if not, the last three to five years. But definitely the most recent time that we are responsible for. So because of those issues, you know, I wanted to throw out to the board, and I'll start with Mary, Ms. Fisher, and work the way down, and find out, does this idea, if it's plausible, help me explain what you, you know, what's good and bad, and let's, and do we want to actually put this in at the end? After everybody speaks, I'm going to go back and take consensus to find out whether we want to move this forward or not, because I don't want to waste time at the board meeting if I don't have the support of the board. So Ms. Fisher?
Okay, well, of course, I've been giving this a lot of thought, and I've been doing some research. I searched all of the applicants for Florida superintendencies over the last 18 months, and I have a bank of names that I have recorded. Then I've searched those banks of names, and these people are from all over the country, some at retirement, some not, some having left their positions for other reasons. So I found a few that were not problematic and that had exemplary service and wonderful curriculum vitae. I have also been experiencing a lot of feedback from people in the community, the business community, the legal community, many of our own staff members, parents, and it appears right now that we are moving forward, that work is being done, that the schools are calm and stable. And so, right now, it looks like things are good. And as we've said before, statutorily, when Dr. Atkins was sworn in, he did become the superintendent of Lee County Schools. Whether we put any kind of preposition or title on that, it's still superintendent. I'm feeling like if he's doing the job, and the community and our staff people think he's doing the job, I'm feeling inclined to leave it the way it is right now. I'm not sure about a time certain, but I know that we had agreed that when we meet on the 16th and 17th, we'd have a conversation. So that would give us, you know, another, another two weeks to see how things go and to gather information from our public and our community, and maybe then make a decision about a time certain. But, you know, I don't know that we're going to get any magic bullet out of a national search. And the other thing, we're missing a board member right now, and so, you know, I would like for her to have the opportunity to weigh in and be in on the conversation with us. But I am definitely leaning towards not rocking the boat at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier.
Thank you. I think all of us have been doing our own bit of research and looking around, and I took a different spin on things. I looked at the, I looked at the last three national searches that we have had here in Lee County. And every one of those candidates that were, that came out of those national searches, those were not successful superintendents. If you go back and you look at our community, and you look at the people that have had success and longer terms, that, you know, the news press put it out there, I believe it was Saturday or Sunday, I don't know what day, or Monday, whatever day it was in the paper, that, you know, they were basically talking about the national average, and the national average is two to two and a half years is the longevity. Well, and they gave a number of superintendents that we've had in the last, you know, the last few years, and, you know, there was one superintendent that sat here for almost eight years that caused our average, you know, to be more stab, more stable. And I think that, you know, it was real funny, yesterday, I was in a car pickup line, and somebody came up to me to talk to me, and I, you know, I put the window down, and we were talking, and she says, "You know, y'all don't need to waste that money and do that." And I'm hearing that from everybody. I'm hearing, you know, "As long as y'all have somebody in there, you know, you need to stick with that person. You don't need to do another, another, you know, you don't need to toss everything up." And I think I said, after I was at the industry awards luncheon, you know, I had several business people at that luncheon say, you know, "Can he do the job? Is he going to be successful? Does he have the skills? Then you need to keep him there. Y'all need to settle things down." And I realized that, and, you know, I read the email that came from Mrs. Morgan, and it was very verbose, and basically saying understandings, which I didn't agree with, because they were not things that I necessarily had understood. You know, it was not my understanding of the consensus that we would come back, because I think my exact words were, "Wait a minute, let me scratch my head and see, are we going to do an interim search for an interim? We're going to do a mini interim search?" I mean, I almost made it laughable in that conversation, because you just don't do that. I mean, it shows that you are inept as a board of directors, and you don't, you're not, you don't have the skills to do, to make the tough decisions and do what you need to be doing when you're sitting here at this table. I mean, you make a decision, you stick with your decision, and, you know, you, you know, if the person's not doing the job, they can't do what they, they are put there to do, then you move on from there. And as far as, you know, I've heard, I've heard a little bit about a business person. We need a business person. And, you know, if you have the right person in the CEO position, there are plenty of positions around that position where you can tap into a business person. For instance, the position that was vacated by Dr. Atkins. And then what continues to come to me, come back to me, is what message are we sending to our employees if we are saying none of our employees are worthy? If we say that we don't, we're not going to allow anybody who's in the position now to apply, so therefore, we're willing to go for, you know, a third or fourth or fifth string person, because we want to give him that opportunity? Well, if we think he is that good now, why don't we, why don't we do something about it now? I think that, I know there's been a lot of talk about this national search, I know that, that there's, there's also been a lot of talk about national searches don't produce any good candidates. That was what put me on that trail to go and look. And sure enough, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be disparaging with my comments about those previous superintendents, but they weren't successful. And, and, you know, the lady that came to my car yesterday, she said, "Jeannie, you know it's going to take, you know, if y'all do a national search and y'all get somebody from 10 but 2, it's going to take them two years just to find out where all the schools are. And by that time, you're going to have a new board, and the new board's not going to want that person, they're going to want their own person, and if you got somebody good in there, why don't you just continue?" And if she knows that I'm sitting here saying this, she might have my head tomorrow afternoon in car line. But I think that where I am right now, I think I said it the other day when we did it, I'm fine with the superintendent that we have. I think I said that in state statute, there is not a definition for an interim, and I have become a little bit taken back every time I see that name in front, or that adjective in front of your name. And I apologize for our public for doing that. I mean, shame on our public for doing that, shame on our media for doing that, because I don't believe they've done that to previous superintendents, and for them to do that for you is, I think, incorrect and wrong. So, I mean, I'm ready to go ahead and take the move, because I think stability, you know, I ask, in fact, I called Dr. Atkins this morning, and I said, "Okay, now, now, help me out. How many weeks has this been? Three week, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks?" He said, "This is going into the fourth week." Well, I'm going to tell you something. This has been the most peaceful four weeks for me that I've had probably in the last several years. So he's been attention to detail, he's demonstrated leadership in some of the decisions that he's made. I'm ready to move.
Ms. LaRiviere?
Well, at this point, I definitely believe we need to forget this whole idea of looking through applications for an interim. We don't need to stop anything. Dr. Atkins has been doing a phenomenal job. I have no desire for anyone else to come in, and when I look at those applications, I say, "Why bother?" I also believe, I agree with you, with others who have said, "We've got another board coming on, and if we're going to make any other decisions, it needs to be, come as a result of the new board, of seven." One of the things that's come out to me, and again, it happened again just today, there is a knowledge base that Dr. Atkins has had, just because of all of his involvements with, working with our associations. There are probably some pieces to the puzzle that he, he just has that greater, he has a phenomenal knowledge base in the inner workings that I believe it would take someone a very long time to get. The other part is, we do have a board member not here. I would rather see us look at our agenda for our workshop, and I believe what our main focus needs to be on is on us as a board. I believe that now and then, instead of us worrying about somebody else leading our district, our job needs to be looking at ourselves and making sure that we are a good team, and we're working together, we're supporting each other, we've got all of our ducks in a row, so we're doing our jobs the right way, staying in our lanes, and so that it will help, better help with that transition of board member, extra board members coming on with us. I have no desire at this time for a national search. I believe, I kind of, I guess, you know, if I were to say my leanings, my thoughts are, let's wait. Wait till we have other board members on and have the opportunity of working with Dr. Atkins. I know that I've heard from staff, parents, principals, anyone who's ever talked with me from the school said, "You don't know what a relief it was to know that with Dr. Graham's leaving, that Dr. Atkins was here." They said, "We felt like, we don't have to be in a panic mode. We can be, we know what our direction is, we're ready to move forward, we're going to stick with that strategic plan." to stick with that strategic plan. So, I believe that we have the man for the job for right now.
Okay. I guess I'm, I think what I'm gleaning from this is, I think every, I don't know exactly what I'm leaning. My biggest issue is, is that he still, the district, Dr. Atkins himself, still feels that he's interim because he is interim. We all say we like him as we like him, but we don't know for how long we like him. So, I think I gathered from Ms. Fisher is, let's talk about a, if there is a duration or not at the workshop on the 16th when we actually have all five of us here? Is that, is that kind of what I heard?
Yes.
And so that way we have, and then we can have that discussion whether or not we're, there is going to be any type of date or not, or we get something finished?
Yes.
Is that, is that Ms. Fisher?
Yes, that's what I was saying. And, I mean, I see no need to upset the apple cart at this point. If the job is being done and our people are secure and stable and, you know, I have, after my research, I have lost my interest in a national search. And I can't say that I've got every single possibility, but I've spent hours doing it and making calls and talked to people all over the country.
You've been very intelligent.
So, I say leave it the way it is. When Mrs. Morgan returns and we have our workshop, we can just finalize.
Okay, we'll bring it back up then at the workshop. I guess my biggest thing is, you know, Monday, Sunday or Monday, you know, the media will not let this go. The media made a full story above the page, above the fold on the front page about a national search and interim until we set direction, until we tell the community which way we're going, rather than just saying, we're just going to kind of hang loose and see what happens until we lead. This district is not moving, is not moving completely forward. And I believe Dr. Atkins deserves the respect to say either he's in or he's not. And so I don't have a problem waiting until the 16th, but my, my consternation is, is that I think, again, we're not showing the community we know how to lead, that we're just kind of going to float down the road and kind of see how it plans. So, again, and I don't mean to, Ms. Fisher, I understand your position about having somebody here, and I agree with you. I think that we should, 16th when all of us are here. But I really think that, that this board needs to set a direction. Ms. Dozier and then Ms. Fisher.
Well, I'm going to give you all an example of something that happened years ago. Years ago, there was an emergency that occurred in this school district and the chairman was out of town. The vice chairman had to call a special meeting because something had to be done like that. That those people that were there went ahead and put somebody in place. You know, one of the people that contacted me over the weekend was a very influential community member that I have the utmost respect for. And one of the things that he said to me, he said, can y'all afford to stop doing business just because you have someone that chose to take a vacation during the school year, number one? And number two, don't y'all have long periods when y'all can take vacations at other times? Well, the answer to that was, yes, there are other times we take, we've got almost the entire month in July. And that was a little, it was a little bit of a different edge to it. And basically was saying, you know, just what you're saying, that we need to, we need to continue to try to demonstrate to the public that we're okay with where we are and that we think that this person who's sitting in that chair is doing a good job. We can trust this individual. He has the skills to lead this district. And like I told him this morning, he has already demonstrated leadership skills to me in several, several things that I've pitched to him through emails. And, and, you know, it's like a person has emailed me about an issue and then I, I say, you know, thank you for sending this to me and I regret that you're having this situation. I will copy the superintendent and ask that he have the appropriate staff person. All of a sudden, I get an email back 24 hours, 48 hours later, and the problem was solved. And the problem, several of those decisions, I didn't ask for anything. I just simply did what I always do. And instead of it being drug out, he already made a decision. And he told staff to take care of it. This is what we're going to do because this is the right thing to do. I mean, that is leadership. You know, that's demonstrating that you're making the tough decisions right now. You're not going to put them on the back burner and you're not going to sit there and you're not going to go over and over and over them. But instead, you're going to make the decisions when you have to make the tough decisions. And, you know, as I said, I regret that Mrs. Morgan is not here. I've been out of town too. And in fact, I left town last Tuesday, Wednesday after the board meeting. And we had to come through horrific weather in order to get back to Fort Myers for me to be at this meeting. And, you know, my husband was telling me, he says, you know, honey, we don't have to go back to Fort Myers, we can stay right here if you want to. No, honey, I can't do that. I've got a commitment. I've got to be at this board table. You know, if I'm not sick, or if I don't have a member of my family sick, then I'm here. Or if the business doesn't call me away. So, you know, we are putting on hold our decisions and I'm telling you all that decisions have been made by previous boards. And frankly, I am, I am very reluctant to pick up the newspaper because I don't know what they're going to put in there again about the fact, and right now, we're just feeding them stories. So, I'm ready to make a decision, move on, and let's continue the good work that, allow him to continue the good work that he's been doing since he's been in that seat.
Ms. Fisher.
Well, I'm definitely hearing consensus among the four of us. And I know that Dr. Atkins has the experience, the skill set. He has demonstrated an almost uncanny ability to problem solve and to get things moving in the right direction. I also know that he is here for the long haul and has a vested interest in this community. So with that, you know, if, if what we need to do is to do something today, I really want to show stability. I think we have a consensus. When we had the workshop, when we appointed Dr. Atkins, we did make a decision as a group.
I vote.
And whatever the acronyms were, we put those on there. We said, okay, enacting till an interim, to the search. And in my mind, at that moment, that was very complicated. And so, I'm more of a no frills person. So I'm, you know, I'm ready to move forward if the three of you are.
Thank you, Ms. LaRiviere.
I would, I would suggest that to let everyone in the public know and the community know that the intent of the majority of this board would be to ensure Dr. Atkins is our superintendent for the long term. I would suggest that instead of our, coming up with a motion that we want to approve tonight, that we make, do a vote or whatever, that we appoint someone to work with Mr. Martin and Dr. Atkins to develop that offer which would create a change in contract. And I, I would believe, I believe we need to go with, in my opinion, would be 17 months. But I think we need to have a full piece that can be worked on and pulled together to be brought at the next board meeting.
Just, and in deference, I've been working, again, because I do believe stability, I think right now that the Lee County School District is in a critical point. And I believe that Dr. Atkins has the staff. I believe that we have the horses. I believe that he can run these horses, that we can, we can, we can do great things. And I think this board needs to show that leadership. So I have worked with Mr. Martin and I've been working extensively with Dr. Atkins. Dr. Atkins, you know, it's so funny when, back in the day, and I, you know, when Dr. Browder was at Fort Myers High, after we had San, Saunders, you know, John Sanders, who was a national search recipient, when we removed him, and this is, in history, we've terminated John Sanders for cause. The first time in Florida history that any school district ever terminated a superintendent for cause and didn't pay him a penny. And so we terminated him, it still cost us $63,000 in legal fees. And so, when, you know, people talk about the $350,000 golden parachute with Browder, you know, understand that Dr. Browder, when he came, when we hired him, he looked at me, I met him at Fort Myers High, and he said, it's all he wanted was that job. And he said, I will never ask for a raise until I prove myself. He said, give me what you paid him, $150,000 at the time, back then in 2002. He said, I will never ask for a raise until I prove myself. He worked for us for five years and never asked for a raise. And then in 2007, in the middle of a financial crisis, when we had no money, at the time, there was two positions open at the time.
Excuse me, Mr. Toyler.
Yes?
I'm going to, I'm going to just call exception to one thing you've said. He did not come on at 150, I believe he came on at 130.
Oh, what, uh, thank you.
Because he had not been a sitting superintendent, he lowered what he would come on board for.
There you go. Thank you. So, he, and so we had no money. And at the time, there was two positions open. There was a position open in Hillsborough or Pinellas that was offering about 285,000. And then there was an offer at Indian River that was about 235. Those two positions were open. So this job for our new superintendent was worth about $250,000. So instead, he didn't ask for any money because he knew he didn't have it. And he said, look, I'll work for you for nothing, you know, for no raise. But when I leave, and he expected to be here for eight more years, he said, you write me a check for $350,000. So if you think about it, every year, we were making $100,000. And he actually stayed from 2007 until 2010, plus the 50,000 search. So even when he left in 2010, because the new board said they didn't want him, we still broke even. Had the new board kept Dr. Browder on, we would have been making $100,000 profit for the taxpayers every day. So, I still take umbrage when people talk about a golden parachute because I think this board was financially prudent. But my point is, is that he did that because he loved our district. And I, and I see that same thing when I talk to, every time I talk to Dr. Atkins, in what he does. He loves this district and he will do whatever it takes for the betterment of this district. If it meant for him not to be superintendent, he'd say, put me where you need me. And he's been that way in every position that he's taken. But it's an opportunity where he thinks that he is the man for the job, and I believe he's the man for the job. And so, when we gave him that interim position, he didn't even want any more money. He said, no, I'm good at where I'm at. So, when we talked about the 17 months, I talked to Dr., you know, and when I originally brought it to the board, I said, you know, give him the money that we paid Dr. Graham and give him the transportation allowance. He went back to me, he said, Steve, that's, that's not, that's not the goal. He said, those things are nice. He said, I want to prove myself. He said, give me what I'm getting paid now, not the transportation allowance, not, you know, the only thing we changed in the contract would be, we'd put a termination date on there and then Mr. Martin with his legal beagle ease, we'd have to change two things. We'd add evaluations to allow us the opportunity to give, to evaluate him so we know whether he's doing the job. And we do it in a systematic and timely manner so we would have the opportunity to evaluate him. And the new board would have the opportunity to evaluate him. And then we'd also put a clause in there, of course, for the, if we decide for cause, we want to terminate him, or a notice if he wanted to terminate. And Mr. Martin would go over those provisions. Those are the only two extra provisions. Am I correct?
Yeah, well, yes, sir. There'd be three changes from the present contract. The first would be the term, which we had discussed through January 31, 2017. The second would be periodic evaluation, semi-annual is the language that we put in in the pro-post contracts, so there'd be an evaluation the end of June 16 and at the end of the year 16. And the third change would be a 30-day notice for termination without cause rather than the present five-day.
So those would be the only, only changes. And all that would do, in my mind, would just tell the district, this is our guy, we believe in him, let him do his job. Ms. Fisher.
You know, one time I went to a speed dating event. And really, I really have to say that I think 17 months, if we're going to go for a contract and we're saying that we believe we have the man who can do the job, I say we go for three years. And, and see what happens. Because there's still those other terms in the con, yes, speed dating. There's still those other terms in the contract and, you know, that can be worked out. The evaluations will tell. And at any time after an evaluation, if we don't feel that the job is being done, which I don't usually make predictions, but I think the job is being done, I think it will continue to be done. And I think that we need to show that we are cohesive and that we have faith in this man and give him an adequate contract time.
Ms. LaRiviere and then Ms. Dozier.
I like that idea. I will say that I don't particularly, I don't care for it being ending January 31, just because people are not going to be sworn in till November, the third week of, the third Tuesday in November, whatever that will be next year. And they're, they really aren't going to have an adequate time. It'd be like how you and I were, especially myself, with doing evaluation and like, okay, well, where do I go to, to, you know, to look at all those components? I would say either offer a three-year contract or offer a contract till the end, the end of the school year of 2017, so that there's that time.
The only caveat that I would like to caution the board, again, Dr. Atkins went to 17 months and even went without the transportation allowance, which, you know, if you, if you know how far the superintendent drives in any given week, went, you know, forgave that and the salary, if we're going to extend the contract, which I don't have a problem doing, we have to put provisions in there to allow us to open it up to address his pay. Because if he's doing his job, we, you know, we, we don't pay. And one of the problems, I believe, and I think the community agrees, no matter who you talk to, even the conservative, right-wing people that say, you know, you never want to pay a lot of money, you have to pay to get the leader. When you take a look at, you know, the money that we've paid superintendents and offered in this last time when we took the advice of the FSBA, and I don't, I don't know where that really came from, but I think we woefully underpriced in that last national search to get the pool that we got. And I think that this job, you know, for the, for the trial position, I don't think Dr. Atkins has a problem doing it. But I think it's our responsibility as a board and as fiduciaries to the community and as well as the respect to Dr. Atkins that at some period of time, and I would say maybe at the end of the, either the January, you know, 17-month period, which I know he agreed to, or we'd have to ask him if we go to the end of the school year, that whatever date, that we open it back up and actually do a market analysis search, whatever the superintendents that we pay him based upon, and it's, and it's pretty calculable. If you take a look at all the superintendents across the state of Florida, based on the number of students, we, you can pretty much get within a pretty much 5% or 10% error how much this position would be worth. And I think at that point, and I think I'd have to defer and ask, put Dr. Atkins on the spot at this point if that's something we do, but I'll wait for him until I hear the rest of the board, their position. But I just think that's only fair. So back, we'll go to Ms. Dozier and then Ms. Fisher.
Well, I was sitting here trying to count, you are saying, how many, what is the length that you, you had proposed?
Till the end of January of 16.
Seventeen, sir.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Okay, so that would give, one, two, that would only give three months. Well, it wouldn't even give three months. It would only give two months.
For the new board.
To work with the new board. And two months.
And so I agree with Ms., I agreed with Ms. LaRiviere to go at least until the end of the school year. But then it just becomes problematic is if you go to the end of the school year, then you have the issue as far as you want somebody to start it, you know, when's a good time to do a search if he's not the guy? So, you know, I mean, I just assume, go with what Ms. Fisher said, don't even make the plan on when's a good time to find the new guy. This is our guy, put a three-year contract in, go forward and then, but then we just have to address how we're going to look at compensation.
Right.
Ms. LaRiviere.
Well, I think, Ms. Fisher, did you have something first?
No, no, that would be my recommendation. And I'm sure that the details of the contract negotiation would be handled by Mr. Martin.
One of the things that comes to my mind is I've heard from different people when I say, oh, I'll pay for this and I won't ask the district to pay for it. And they say, well, Pam, there may be a board member one day who's not able to pay for that. We need to know how much things actually cost. And I do believe that as we pay Dr. Atkins, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, you're not requiring a pay raise. But at the same time, it also prepares our district budgetarily. If, you know, Lord forbid, but one day you may just not wake up and we will have to be looking for another superintendent. to be looking for another superintendent, and it will prepare us for, you know, I don't think we'll find another person. And I, and Dr. Atkins, I, I would, I would hope that if we provided you, offered you a contract that was a little bit higher salary, and did offer some travel expenses, that, you know, if we forced it on you, I hope that you would sign it. You know, that's my, I, I just, I believe a man, a man is worthy of their, a worker is worthy of their pay.
So, Board, if I get consensus, I believe that Ms. Fisher's idea of the three-year contract, if you give me the ability, I will turn it over to Mr. Martin, work with Dr. Atkins, and bring back the framework of a motion tonight, and it will go up for, for the motion at tonight's meeting, at that point, you'll have the opportunity to, we can kind of finalize what we need to do as far as to get us there for the financial portion of it, and probably even leave it a little bit more open, to allow us to work it in the future.
So are you saying we would vote on it this evening?
Yes, ma'am.
Normally, if this was brought up at the, at the action meeting, as a, as a motion...
Well, this will actually, the reason why I got consensus now, it would actually be a good cause item and make, and be on the agenda.
Um, under normal situations, I would say I want to wait and do my research, I don't believe that waiting and doing some research would help me in making a decision tonight. So I would be prepared and ready to make a decision this evening.
Ms. Dozier, Ms. Fisher? Okay.
Which one do you want to go first?
Ms. Dozier? I, I got the nod from Ms. Fisher, so, go ahead.
Well, I, I'm just saying that when you prolong things, what happens is you begin to get lobbied, you begin to second-guess yourself, you've already been awarded the opportunity to make these decisions, all of us have, because the public has voted us into these seats, and if they don't think that we make the right decisions, then they have a way of, of showing us they don't have a way, that we're not making the right decisions. And, you know, that's why we're getting paid the big bucks, because we have to make the decisions here. And I think that prolonging the decision is not in the best interest of the children that we serve, I don't think it's in the best interest of the teachers in this district, I don't think it's in the best interest of the principals of this district, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the community. Like, you know, one of the biggest business people here in Fort Myers said, you know, he asked me several, a series of questions at the, the...
Lunch.
Luncheon, and he says, "Then, y'all need to get on with business, you know, y'all need, y'all need to settle things down, and as long as we, we don't make any movement, we haven't settled things down." So I'm ready to settle things down.
Thank you. Anything, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I'm ready to...
Mr. Martin, any questions you may have? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, wait, sorry, Mr. Martin.
Just going to say, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Martin and Dr. Atkins will come up with the terms so that there are provisions like we've had in, in previous contracts, and, and we don't want to make it too easy for anybody, because we all have to work through the hard times. And, and I think that if we're going to show unity and consistency, now's the time to do it.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Mr. Martin?
Just to be sure, I understand the direction, I understand the direction to be to bring a recommendation, I would bring a recommendation this evening, a good cause agenda item for that purpose. What I understand from the board is that the term would be three years, and it would be three years from tomorrow, is that the board's desire? Or three years from the date that Dr. Atkins became superintendent? I know that it matters, the timeframe is short, but we'll, we'll work that out. The other two issues that have been discussed, that I want to be sure I understand what the board has approved, is a travel allowance, which in previous contract was seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and would seem, it sounds like the board wishes to include that, and the other is compensation. I, we understand where Dr. Atkins is at presently in the contract that he has with respect to compensation, I've heard some discussion back and forth, but I'm not sure I understand what direction the board has given as to what it would approve in terms of that compensation.
Ms. LaRiviere.
A question, what is the pay differential between what he's currently making now, and what we were paying Dr. Graham?
I believe the present salary is one-three-three, so it would be approximately fifty-two thousand dollars.
I believe we should pay him the same salary that we were paying Dr. Atkins.
That's with respect to the base salary, of course, only that.
Yeah.
Ms. Dozier.
And I'm fine with that, I'll also throw out something else that, that I'm hearing all the time, and that's about what the pay scale for elected superintendents is in the same district, I can go with either or, you know, it's fine with me.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have, I'll now move to...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I have one comment I need to provide from Ms. Morgan, she asked that I provide during the board member comment at the briefing meeting, and this is, this is her statement, "Based on the outcome of our September fifteen meeting, I roughed out an agenda and made arrangements for facilitation of at least part of the board action planning meeting on October sixteen, seventeen." And her request is, "Board members, kindly, kindly send me your thoughts for meeting topics, and any facilitators you wish to recommend for the sessions."
Do we, and we can just email those to her?
Yes, ma'am, with respect to that issue, you, you can do that through email.
Okay.
And now, Mr. Martin, Board Attorney comments.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Atkins.
Well, first of all, Board, I, I just have to say, I'm absolutely humbled by the support. You know, this is, it's difficult to, to sit here and, and hear, you know, kind words, believe, you know, believe it or not, it really is. I do want you to understand that, that I truly believe this is a team effort, you know, we're a team, our executive team, our principals, parents, community, so these things that, that we have been able to accomplish, it's a "we," and not a "me," so I do want to make that, that clear, but I do appreciate the support, and I think with that support, we're going to accomplish fantastic things, so I, I'm really looking forward to the challenge. I do just a couple of things I wanted to say, earlier I did also tend to do the right thing, and that was a, that was fantastic to those two boys, you know, just very touching to see that. I did make it around to DAC, and that's, that's an exciting group, the large group, I didn't hit the executive group last night, but I saw, saw Andy Erickson, who's a fellow Rotarian, he's in my Rotary, and I'm glad to see him helping to co-lead that, along with Gwen, who was a former student of mine at Nova, she's a wonderful person, and, and so that's two people that I am going to enjoy working with this year. Finally, I did go out to Colonial for Dictionary Day, and I, you know, I know you've probably all made the rounds out, out to Dictionary Day, but that's just a really fun event. I'll tell you, if I, if I ever want to go do something else, it'd be, go be an elementary principal, I mean, that is just, it is just really cool to go out there and see those kids, the smiles on their faces, and then I, you know, met the governor, I had actually had to miss my Rotary meeting, and she was there, so I, but she said, "This gets you a makeup." So I, I got to make up my Rotary meeting and meet the governor for our area, and, and then, of course, participate in that, in that particular day. So, other than that, we are continuing the, the great work of the district, and, and look forward to moving us forward.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, we now have tonight, we have a five o'clock, we have the Arts Awards, yes, and then at six o'clock, we have a regular board meeting. I would, nothing further, I'll adjourn this meeting, thank you.